To call a meeting to order, please stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with which we preach and worship.
Do the, uh, do the final.
I hate these sheets.
I'd like to welcome you to Freehold High School, also known as Ice Station Zebra. Thank you for coming tonight. Uh, okay. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act of Chapter 231 Public Laws of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised in the Antwerp Press, issue of July 30th, 2014. All municipal clerks, townships, and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and requirements of the posting notices have been met. Okay, approval of the minutes, Mr. Voice?
Thank you.
Motion for the minutes?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
Any questions? Comments? Mr. Voice?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
At the pass, I was not here for the last meeting.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazza?
Present but not voting.
Mr. Moses?
Present but under anesthesia.
I think that's abscatch.
All right, next we have Communications, Ron. File in the office of the Board Secretary, reports. Superintendent's report?
Uh, yeah, we'll do, uh, we'll do financial reports first. Do finance.
Okay, we'll do the board reports first. Finance, Michael?
Okay. Uh, thank you, but is this on? Could anybody hear me? Oh, okay. Um, okay. We met on October 14th, which was last week, and we touched on several projects. The first one was with respect to hockey, and we discussed the co-op program both between Marlborough and Holmdale, and Freehold Borough, and Raritan. We're just tweaking the agreement, and the agreements still have to be approv-- actually, that, the one with Freehold Borough was approved by Hazlitt back at the end of September, and I believe Holmdale, I guess they, today's the 20th, on Wednesday, they're supposed to sign that agreement. Then we spent most of the time talking about the Capitol update, and we talked about the roof replacement, um, basically roofs being worked on at Freehold Borough, and of course Marlborough. And with respect to the roof in this building, the upper gym roof is the one substantial project to be done, and the work should be completed over the teachers' convention weekend, and the whole thing is scheduled to be done on November 22nd. With respect to the HVAC in this building, the project is complete with respect to piping, and they're moving to the next phase on that. Then we also had a discussion about pursuing revenues from BPU, because as was discussed prior, there's a lot of grants out there and working with BPU in terms of realizing revenue from the energy savings program that we're implementing. And actually, the architect had a conference call with the unit of BPU that's responsible for the Freehold Regional District, and all the pre-inspections were confirmed and inspected. So, we just discussed and learned about how the first package of lighting retrofits at Borough, Freehold Township, and Manalapan are, uh, should be approved by BPU for incentives by the end of November. So, we look to be moving in the right direction with respect to that. With respect to HVAC, the architects met with our Building and Grounds Department to discuss the schedule. We also talked about the bidding process for that, look for award bids in the first quarter of 2015, and we also had a discussion of how Buildings and Grounds is ultimately going to work with the temperature controls systems and the companies that install the temperature control systems. With respect to the tracks, the Freehold Township project is going well. The track is down, it just has to be painted. And if we look at Manalapan in the big picture, Manalapan is fine, but it's not going as smoothly as Freehold Township, because at Manalapan, the track surface cannot be applied until an issue with tolerances is resolved, so that's going to take longer than expected. And on our November agenda, you can look forward to a construction change order or a construction change directive to be on that agenda. And then we had two other issues that we also talked about. The first one was with respect to the Transportation Depot. Now, we've leased that property for years, and it was a five-year lease, and we're at the end of the lease. So, essentially, uh, there's a new landlord there, and he spent a lot of money in terms of upgrades, so that's good. And a lease agreement's been finalized, and a lease agreement is actually in the agenda tonight for us to vote on. And then I'll just wrap it up with respect to food service. Obviously, we have a new food service company, Pomtonian, and so far, just through word of mouth, the reviews are pretty good from the kids with respect to food quality. Company is getting up to speed. Obviously, they've been serving lunch for five or six weeks now. And I'll just wrap it up by saying, the à la carte sales, as we've discussed before, which are profitable for everyone. Unfortunately, they're getting blown up by the restrictions coming down from the White House with respect to what we can serve the kids and what the kids can eat at lunch. And that's it.
Mike, a quick question, Mike. Target date for the completion of the tracks?
Sean, do you want to take that question?
Sure. Uh, so, the way the contract is structured is, it really happens in two pieces, because as we've discussed, it's difficult to get a block of time in order to do the track from start to finish. To do it from the end of spring track to the beginning of football isn't quite enough. So, the way the contracts are structured, um, there's two periods of time. The first is, um, the majority of the work for demolition of the existing track, or a portion thereof, in the case of Manalapan, and some of the site work and the application of the lower layers of the track. And then come around on, in springtime, before spring track, it's the application of the track itself and the lining, uh, and those types of things that go with it. Now, there's no rigid, um, series of events or timelines for each of those pieces of the work, because it's going to be weather-dependent. So, if we have opportunity, weather-wise, to move forward further than anticipated, great. In fact, you know, no promises, but Freehold Township's track, we should never get into that second post-winter piece, because things have just fallen well. Weather's fallen well, schedule's fallen well, and we're in a good place there. Manalapan was a little bit more complex job to begin with, because it wasn't a complete demolition. But we're still very much on track to be within the contract term. We're hopeful that we can move to a significant completion prior to snow, uh, but again, that's going to be weather-dependent, and it's going to also depend on us making our way through some of these issues that we're dealing with right now.
Thank you, Mr. Voice. Thank you, Mike. Um, next, board report is policy.
So, the Policy Committee met on October 14th. Been quite busy of late. The State Board of Education has re-adopted parts of the Administrative Code, and that has spurred a number of policy revisions and, um, an exceptionally high number of alert, policies within the alert that come from Strauss Esme, who we contract with to at least develop a template for us, policy-wise. So, first and foremost, we had, um, a good discussion around the role of the Policy Committee in terms of crafting policy versus sometimes taking boilerplate, um, language from Strauss Esme, and, uh, really a discussion around what is the Policy Committee's role to develop policy that is specific to Freehold Regional High School District. And we talked a little bit about some of the, uh, specific policies where we spent a lot more time crafting that from a district perspective, such as HIB and the concussion policy, and some of the other, uh, some of the more boilerplate, uh, policies that come down from the state where there are minor language tweaks and the such. And, uh, most of the policies that we discussed, um, on Tuesday night, and that are up for a first read this evening, fall into that latter category. Uh, so first and foremost, we were abolishing a school-level planning, uh, policy this evening, which still references the QAR, uh, which the, the QAR was the Quality Annual Assurance Report. That's how school districts were monitored in the past. We are now monitored under a lovely term named New Jersey CUSAC, which is the Quality Single Accountability Continuum. Uh, so, just, uh, eliminating that policy is, it's no longer relevant. Health services personnel, uh, the crux of that, uh, change is expanding the role of non-certified school nurse and what they can, uh, do within the scope of the school building. Uh, it's very difficult to find capable substitute staff and that are credentialed in schools, so that's, uh, that's a positive for us. Some minor changes in 5306 from health services to non-public schools, uh, which basically just lays out the school district's responsibility in providing health services to students that are enrolled in non-public schools within our boundaries. Minor adoption to student health records, um, health services, uh, just, again, minor, minor changes that basically, um, prescribed the policy requirements removed from the code as per the NJ DOE, uh, and that what's happened now, some of these policies have become redundant, because the language pops in multiple policies, so just cleaning that up is, is, is an ongoing process. Adopting on the first read, the screening for dyslexia policy. This was legislated, uh, last spring, where, um, school faculty are now required to have two hours of training around dyslexia awareness. Um, and, you know, every school district has to screen students that demonstrate one or more criteria along a prescribed continuum of disabilities and, and/or challenges that might be exhibited. Schools have been operating under this, because we were notified that this was coming last spring. Interesting on substance abuse, um, the code, the, the first read of the policy this evening clarifies what a superintendent must report to, uh, local authorities regarding substance abuse, and what the school superintendent may report to local authorities regarding substance abuse. The school's practice has always been to report anyone with possession and/or distribution of, of drugs and/or alcohol. We do not notify the police if someone is under the influence. We go through our, uh, our counseling component there, with our student assistance counselors to work with those students and, and obviously work with the parents. I guess the code was just clarifying what, what, what may and must be done by the superintendent. Uh, and then finally, the, uh, the last policy is, um, they rewrote the policy on developing the Student Code of Conduct, uh, which basically just outlines that the district has to have a process for such, uh, which we've always had in place, uh, but the, uh, the code spells that out explicitly. And that was the Policy Committee meeting.
Next up?
Sure. Um, a very busy few weeks, uh, here for your Regional High School District. This week in particular, a couple of terrific events. So tomorrow night, we have the Marching Band Festival, uh, where, weather permitting, it looks like it will, uh, it will clear up after 5:00, which we're, we're hoping. Um, but, you know, that's one of those events where, um, you really see the scope and the magnitude of the school district and the talent that we have across the district, as all six marching bands perform. Uh, I think it's a, um, it's a wonderful opportunity for anyone to come out and see, um, how strong our music programs are here at Freehold Regional High School District. So, that's tomorrow evening. Thursday evening, we have the College and Career Fair, um, at Coltsneck High School. We do this annually. This is, uh, we do one huge college and career fair, um, open, uh, you know, for, for our students. We have, um, I think, 175-plus colleges and universities that will be present for that. It's become, um, obviously attractive for colleges to attend with, uh, where we can draw from six high schools. So, that's Thursday evening. We've had a very busy couple of weeks. We, we, we've finished up our, our hosting of our various open houses in each of the six high schools, uh, for our learning centers and career academies. Uh, those events are usually, um, well-attended as students in eighth grade and their parents visit each of the different schools and take a look at some of the, the, the programs they may be interested in, in applying to. We also were fortunate, um, about a week and a half ago, to host a delegation from New Taipei, uh, about 18 educators, New Taipei, Taiwan, uh, folks came out, and we, at Coltsneck High School on a Saturday afternoon, put together a relatively extensive presentation, for myself, the superintendent of Freehold Borough, the superintendent of Linden Public Schools, uh, and, and really, our, our presentation focused on, um, how to strategically use data in long-term planning. Uh, and then, uh, the delegation visited several Monmouth County schools ourselves, the Long Branch Public Schools, the Marlborough K8, and the Freehold K8 over the period of, uh, several days, and spent time, some extensive time, at Freehold Township High School for us, and Coltsneck High School. Uh, so, it was a, it was a wonderful opportunity to, um, spend some time with educators from, uh, obviously, a very different, uh, system than ours, to learn from them. Uh, it's the first step, hopefully, in a process. We did sign a memorandum of understanding with, uh, the New Taipei City officials last school year. Uh, the next step in that process would be looking at potential sister-school agreements, uh, potentially having a delegation of our, our own educators, uh, you know, traveling abroad, uh, to learn from those folks as well. So, um, and it was also, uh, a very nice, um, opportunity for the, the regional schools that, uh, were involved in hosting, uh, to collaborate and, and making that happen. Uh, we also had our first executive student cabinet meeting, uh, last week. Dr. Hazel and I, uh, led, uh, led the students through some conversations around educational experiences. I gathered some feedback on the food service, just from, uh, student perspective, and then Dr. Moore, um, walked the students through an activity to solicit feedback about, uh, pursuing our passions in, in the school district, and, and how that, that, that happens readily in some cases, and what environmental impacts may impede, uh, those passions in other places. And so, it was a very rich discussion, um, that, uh, the students will then share out with their building, respective building principals, and I'm, I'm looking forward to, to working with this group throughout the, um, course of the school year. We also, uh, our heroin awareness presentations are occurring throughout the schools. Um, I think that in three of the high schools, they've occurred thus far, they're scheduled for all six. This is really, um, a county-wide initiative spearheaded by the County Prosecutor's Office, uh, and, uh, I think that, you know, folks are hopefully well-aware at this point in time that, um, you know, that heroin is a significant issue, uh, in, and not just in the state, but particularly in Monmouth County, uh, and it's something that, um, we feel is, is an important message to share with our student body, uh, and so those, those presentations are underway. We also have a verification visit this Thursday and Friday scheduled from the International Baccalaureate folks, uh, so they'll be spending two days at Freehold Township High School, interviewing a number of us, uh, along a, a very rigid schedule, to answer a number of questions about, uh, the IB program, to speak to the folks who are going to, uh, be charged with really implementing the day-to-day, uh, and hopefully, that's the last real major step for us to be coming, um, to moving forward in the IB process. Finally, uh, I'd like to congratulate, um, Manalapan High School, that were the Model Classroom Grant Award winners, uh, from Ocean First. Uh, they won a grant, uh, last week for $10,000 for the Science and Engineering Program. Uh, it was a very well-written grant. I know Mr. Donahue, who, uh, is now at Coltsneck High School, was, was instrumental in, uh, writing some of that grant with Dr. Angelozzi. Uh, we also utilized Hanover research for some, uh, technical expertise, so, uh, that paid off, obviously. Uh, and it's a nice feather in the cap, and, um, you know, there were dozens of schools that had applied for that particular grant. Uh, we've participated in a couple, uh, Google Hangouts with, uh, districts and speakers from across the country, through our work with the Consortium for Innovation, uh, where we're partnered with approximately 20 other school districts across the country, uh, the most recent of which was, uh, this past Thursday, uh, where Yvette Jackson, um, talked about her pedagogy of confidence, um, fascinating take on public schools and, uh, what we could do better for, for all students. Uh, and, um, we've had the good fortune of seeing Dr. Jackson in the past, uh, but that was, uh, a hangout that was, uh, made available to the entire, uh, faculty here at Freehold Regional High School District, for those who cared to participate. And finally, uh, last week, we, um, we had the Commissioner's Convocation. Uh, they did something differently this year. Typically, in the past, that was all superintendents travel to a particular spot in the state. Uh, the Commissioner this year, uh, conducted three such sessions by region. Certainly, a lot more, uh, convenient for folks to come, uh, and, and just see an update on, uh, park, uh, and Common Core implementation, and the new teacher evaluation model, you know, the three major mandates that have been, uh, driving much of our, much of our work these past few years. Uh, and finally, um, Spooktacular happened last week, uh, in downtown Freehold, which is one of my absolute favorite days of, of the year. Uh, that's where, um, students from all six of our high schools design a sketch drawing that they then paint on shops across the downtown Freehold area. Uh, it's a, it's a terrific life lesson in planning and implementing a project from start to finish, you know, so conceptualizing the idea, putting that idea to paper, then seeing that through, uh, within a very tight timeline during the day, and painting the windows, and some of the, uh, talent that is on display that day is, is incredible, uh, and it's great to just walk the streets and, and talk to our students as they're, they're engaged in that process. We'll have a presentation, uh, at the November 17th meeting for the winners of that, uh, that contest. It is, it is judged. Uh, and I'd, I'd like to thank the folks from the Spooktacular Committee, who, uh, go out of their way each year to, um, accommodate and work with our students and our faculty, uh, and, and certainly Federici's Downtown, who donate about 50 pies every, every school year to, to our students for lunch. Uh, this Sunday is the Spooktacular Parade in Freehold. I will not be driving my minivan in it this year, however, I will certainly, uh, be, um, moving to and fro to watch all of our marching bands participate. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr.. Sampson. Uh, next, we have public participation. We only have one name on the list, so if you didn't get a chance to sign up, just let me know. Before we have public participation, um, our legal representation tonight, Mr. Scannell, I'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Moses.
You're welcome, sir.
Uh, no, just, just as a general reminder, uh, just that with any public participation, uh, the board respectfully requests that, uh, we not discuss any student matters, because the board, obviously, for confidentiality rights, cannot discuss those matters publicly. Also ask that, any comments that are made, uh, avoid from being disparaging or defaming to any, uh, public employee or any other official. Uh, it's just kind of a, a general reminder that, that we put out periodically, uh, so, this was just the time of the year, uh, where we annually put that out, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moses.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the one and only name on the list is L. Viera? Did I say it right? All right.
My name is Leah Viera, and I live in Freehold Township. Um, I came tonight because the board is, uh, reviewing the screening for dyslexia policy. Uh, I wanted to address the board, but as you stated, the board, the board committee will be looking at crafting policy in the interim. As you do this, I'm sure that you will find statistics regarding dyslexia, such as Governor Christie's 2012 Task Force on Reading, that says that 85% of special education students' primary deficit is in reading. Uh, the National Institute of Health also states that dyslexia is the leading cause of high school dropouts. The International Dyslexia Association, um, lists the high school dropout rate of dyslexics is 35%, and only 2% of dyslexic students that enter college will actually finish a four-year term. Now, I didn't come here tonight just to give you statistics that you could have found, hopefully, if the committee researches this before they craft their policy. I came to because I felt compelled, as a, a resident of this district, I have a very close personal friend who has a son who graduated in the last few years from the Freehold Regional High School system. He, um, is classified in elementary school, uh, but because, up until now, you know, we don't discuss the word dyslexia, whether it's diagnosed in special education, public school, he was continued through the system under specific learning disability. Uh, got into high school, reading below grade level, and there were no interventions done. Uh, as you stated earlier, with the push for park and Common Core, the buzzword is college and career ready. I'd like to let you know what happens when we put students unidentified through the school system. This child graduated, passed the HESP, two points above what was required, made it through. Uh, went to Brookdale, took the ActuBlaser, was unable to pass, so had to take remedial classes. Was unable to pass the remedial reading classes at Brookdale, and is now told that they are not eligible to sign up for any more classes until they can pass the remedial reading classes. I wanted to add a human side, because this is a child who graduated from this district. I understand that we have a gem in our district of 13 learning academies that produce wonderful, um, students that go on to accomplish many great things. Can you imagine the, the lower 20% sitting at your high school graduation, and listen to the speech of the valedictorian? But who wonders what's going through that child's mind, who graduates high school, barely functioning at a middle school reading level? I'm hoping that when the committee gets together and considers how to craft their policy, they ask themselves, what is currently the number of students identified in a regional high school district as being dyslexic? And is that accurate? What is the number of teachers that this whole district has that has any specialty in reading disabilities? And I will add to that, that because someone has a degree in special education, those special education degrees have no specific training in reading disabilities. On a side note, I'd like to say, when you think about that, I'd like to compare that number to the fact that in tonight's honorarium approval, there's 97 sports coaches being approved. 97 winter sports coaches being approved. If you research the number of how many staff you have, not administrative staff, but staff in the classroom, and let's look at the number of in-class resource staff, because these children are being put into a program and being told, we'll give them in-class support and as a teacher. But how many of those staff members are provided or trained with specific information in reading disabilities? Not professional development, not a class that they can attend, but specific training? I also wonder if you would please look at the number of students that leave this regional system and have to take the ActuBlaser, and what the percentage is of those students that don't pass the ActuBlaser in local community colleges. I imagine most of them will go to Brookdale in this district. What is the policy that is currently in place regarding dyslexia screening? What have we done up until now, and how effective has that been? If a student I spoke of was your friend's child instead of mine, don't you have more answers to these questions before I came in tonight? That's what I wondered. I thank you for taking the time, Mr. Moses.
Thank you.
Thank you. No worries.
Sure.
Sure. Mrs. Viera? Yes. Now, we truly, as a Board Superintendent and the Directors of the Freehold Regional High School District, we really appreciate your comments and what you had to say this evening. In our district, we're extremely passionate about all students, and have done a lot of work extensively with our Special Education Department. Throughout our schools, we have a number of Wilson-certified reading teachers. We are also actually, at the present time, undergoing an in-depth review and study of our ICR program. We have an ICR Task Force and facilitators throughout our entire district that are looking at the org for teaching models, looking at the data from student IEPs in order to best deliver instruction for the students. I could probably talk to you for hours on end about our programs and what we have put in place in the school district. I'd welcome an opportunity to talk with you personally, but it is something that's very near and dear to the hearts of our Board members and our central office staff and all of our administrators.
I'm interested in that. I'm a parent, 20 years dyslexic son, and I'm looking at what's coming down the road. And I know all of that will be served patient. I know how it's offered. It's not enough. It's really not enough. If a child gets to the high school level and still cannot successfully read, it's very, very difficult.
By the third grade level?
Third grade is basic functional literacy, basic functional literacy. But I know with all the assessments that are currently being done, you're looking at numbers that aren't accurately telling you what that... The purpose of these assessments is to be able to craft a remediation, is to be able to do something, not to be able to say, okay, we punched the ticket, and we can move on. You know, that's part of why I decided to come here. I asked this student if it was okay for me to come and discuss their situation before I came here, and they said yes, which I thought was really great. They're not the only one. They're the only one I'm in, and I have a son, and I'm looking at what his potential, what his possibilities are. We're looking at IDPA and changing all these things that are going on now. Why? Why can we not help? This is reading. This is reading. I know you're saying Wilson, and we craft this, and we're committed to this.
Well, there's a plethora of programs, online programs through our child study teams, through our...
That's not enough. It's not enough. It's false information.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I mean, I could have a million people believing, we can talk to these.
Absolutely.
I'm trying to give a human side to say, that for all the statistics, and all the assessments, and all the Wilson, and in-class resource support, et cetera, it's not working. It's not working. It's just not working. And we have to do something. If we really want to look and say, we don't need to follow policy, we don't need to be reactive to what's coming down, we need to be proactive. The Department of Education, in its infinite wisdom, decided that the screening methods could be determined by school districts, because they probably already have them anyway. I've read the policy from the Department of Education. Well, if we've had the policy already, why aren't we using it? Why aren't we using it? And newly screened teachers, and newly trained teachers in Wilson, excuse me, it's not enough. It's not enough. What about the generalization of skills?
Sure. And again...
Knowing science and all those other subjects, I don't want to pick up... I guess no one else is going to be too excited, but I'm just saying, just look at this, do the research, this is important. This is really, really important. As a society, do we want to put out a generation of people that are barely literate? Is that what we want to say is our legislative?
I just wanted to ask, you know, the administration, what we can do, or what we do do, will do routinely, and something like this, to bring in, you know, parents who, you know, are knowledgeable about the condition for their own children, you know, and as we craft these things.
I'll adjust that. I think that, you know, as Dr. Hazel noted, there's a lot of work that's unfolding presently in the district, particularly around special education, you know. So when we talk about all students, you know, we've seen, it is not just about the learning academies here, it is about every child in this school district. That's ongoing work, and it's time-consuming work. Certainly, we would reach out to, be open to reaching out to parents with expertise, parents who avail themselves to us. I mean, that's part of our, that's, you know, it's a, it's a community endeavor to get it right, when it comes down to making specific decisions on which way we're going to go. I mean, that's an administrative decision, ultimately, you would hope, fostered with a lot of input from a lot of different folks. So, you know, I know that Dr. Hazel, I know that Mrs. Davis are, you know, constantly reaching out to engage the special education community in particular, so I wouldn't see that as being prohibitive in any way to, you know, to foster some feedback loops where we could be talking about, you know, what we're looking at, and explaining our rationale for why we aren't hearing from other folks, and seeing what they might bring to the table to help inform us as we go. I understand it, you know, I have four children myself, and students that have different needs, so I live it as a parent, you know, so I get that. But, you know, it's not, it's not a quick, it's not a quick fix. The state has just, you know, what you talked about with how they categorize it, and, I mean, it, you know, they've come around to it finally. But I think that we'll be, as we take a look at that, we'll be more than open in reaching out to folks, and I'm sure Dr. Hazel, if you give her your contact information, she'll talk to you directly before we even go anywhere. She's very good at that part of things, so.
Can I just ask a follow-up to that? Is the task force that Dr. Hazel referred to, is that, you know, a broad task force that would be, you know, like an umbrella or something like this, or are we thinking of doing, or would we consider doing something more specific to this?
Well, the task force that Dr. Hazel noted is the in-class resource task force. So we're looking at our, we're targeting the teaching within the ICR classroom specifically, in particular, the co-teaching model. So that task force is made up of folks, teachers, administrators, support staff members that are immersed in that model, to get the instructional piece right, outside of specific student needs, but the actual co-teaching within that classroom, to make sure that we maximize those two individual adults that are within a classroom for all students, you know, with, obviously, in an ICR classroom, you have, in any classroom, it doesn't matter if it's an ICR, you have a wide range of students, you know, students are different. So, right now, we're focused on the co-teaching model. If we expand that down the road, you know, we might take a look at that, but that's not where we are with it presently.
And that doesn't, so that's not a parent model, there's not, there's not a part of the framework?
It's not, it's not, we're not there yet with it, no.
At this point, it's more data-driven, looking at IEPs, so it's not information that could be shared with anyone from the outside.
But we're not even there yet, Amy, with, you know, that was work that started last year. We've gone a long way in identifying, you know, what we think are some of our non-negotiables about the instructional practice in those classrooms, and then having some exemplary models of that. And then we had an external group in of, from the Panasonic Foundation, of about 15 other superintendents who came into the classrooms, offered us some objective feedback of what we were doing well, what we needed to improve around that specific model. But, you know, that's where we are with it right now.
So what I was looking for basically was, you know, a commitment when we do reach that point, to involve parents, and it sounds like you've given that commitment, when, you know, when the time is right, and I appreciate that.
I understand that time, when you're in the administration level, but the thing about that time is, one in five people are affected by dyslexia or mild or profound. So if you look through your census, 20% of your census in school, and you'll be graduating as that time is... Each one of those who stands in the hourglass is another student. So I'm, I'm really interested, I understand that you're creating your task force, et cetera, but what these in-class teachers need is, you need people who have some specific leadership, some specific training in these disabilities. And it's not just a regular education teacher who takes a workshop and does his part out. And I'm not trying to do little was done, because I understand that Wilson is, is an important program that has been successful. It's just that when you get to high school level, it's a little bit late to start there.
You know, the bottom-line purpose of the Board meetings is to improve the district, and I'd just like to say that I really appreciate you bringing awareness to this issue, because it's going to be looked at more carefully as a result of your presentation tonight, and my own view, and I'm sure the rest of the Board, is we appreciate what you did by bringing this to our attention, and please look at it that way.
I think that, yeah.
No, that's very good.
Thank you.
Okay, was there anyone else who... No? Yes? No? Okay. Okay, then, next is up, is the agenda, and I'd like to take the agenda...
Hold on. If I may, just real quick, I have, there's an...
Go ahead, Mr. Boyce.
...on the back table, two items, one of them, I-1 was a placeholder already on the agenda that we had posted online. It's for the lease of the transportation facility. So that's on the back table, and also a new one, approval of a joint transportation agreement with Monmouth Regional for the transportation of one kid, which is something that just came through here today, so we wanted to get it on the agenda. In addition, in the front of the agenda, and as nobody was here at 6:00, I'll just repeat, the executive session motion needs to identify, with some specificity, the items that'll be discussed in executive session. And there were items listed in there, but two additional items were added. The first one is under the exception number seven, it's docket number MON-L-3356-13, and also under exception number eight, personnel items as noted on the agenda. So, thank you, Mr. Moses.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Okay, I'd like to take the agenda in one shot, that would be G-1 through K-3.
Motion to pass G-1 through K-3.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanhauser?
Yes, except to item G-5, the Coltsneck High School head wrestling coach position, I vote no.
Mrs. Lavine?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes. Okay, next up, old business. New business, I'd just like to say that we have 45 minutes left in the Women's National Soccer Team playing Haiti on Fox Soccer Channel 1, if you'd like to watch that.
Thank you.
And, any other business?
That's it.
We have an agenda, I mean, we have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, as you say, so shall it be written. Have a good night, thank you for coming.